Here we go. The City Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, December 2nd. I can't believe it's December 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson is absent this evening. Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Tatman.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Bryson. Evening.
Support.
Thanks, Bill.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the following addition? We're going to do a closed session today to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by federal or state statute MCL 15-268-H-HENRY. Any questions? Roll call, please. Vote.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Well, there was this other item that was left on our desk. Are we doing that?
No, we need to see that stuff before we do the agenda. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Go ahead.
Phil Paluckshack, 546, Chartier. I recently came into contact, I should say, with some of the emails our mayor has sent out, and I just wanted to read one for the public. This was from Sheriff Verkaman Wednesday, October 20th, at 2021. It was sent to Attorney Bob Davis, City Manager Chris Baxter, and our City Clerk Chris Baxter. It says, "Good morning. The City of Warren attaches this disclaimer to all foyer requests. This prevents the requester from sharing requested information to any outside person, organization, that did not make the request. I would like to do the same immediately for any foyer requests made to the City of Marine City." And I will say, I contacted the City of Warren, and this is just the boilerplate on their emails. They do not have this on their foyer request forms. The material contained in this message and the attached documents contain information which is privileged, confidential, and exempt from disclosure under the law. These materials are not to be duplicated, reproduced, distributed, or dismantled in any fashion and/or by any means whatsoever. If you are not the intended recipient, employee, or agent responsible for delivering the message to the intended recipient, you are hereby notified that any viewing, examination, distribution, or copying in any fashion or manner of this information is strictly prohibited. If you have received this communication there, please notify the City Marine City Attorney's Office by telephone at 586-111-1111. I don't understand why this wasn't added to our foyer request document. I'm sure Chris can attest to the fact that such requests are now coming into the office much more frequently and are being used to the detriment of the city and our reputation. This is the second time our mayor has made a suggestion to thwart our foyer processes. The first one was at the meeting, 11/19/2020, when our mayor made a suggestion over Zoom and the public, you know, when they're doing Zoom. Asked Bob Davis, and Bob explained it to her thankfully because I could have gotten in legal trouble for this one. Why can we not have a $500 minimum starting fee on any foyer? Our mayor said that in public. Please stop trying to make attempts to mess with our foyer process. It is state governed. End of story. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Heather Warner, 345, North Elizabeth. In regards to a conversation at the last meeting, regarding one meeting a month, I know you guys are going to do what you want to do. It makes it easier for you. That's fine. I don't see how Monday's a good day for anybody. Most of us are doing three days' worth of work. I work from home, and I work 14 hours on a Monday. And I work Saturdays and Sundays, just so Monday's not so bad. But that's fine. You guys do what you want to do. However, I would like to put in a request that if we do go to one meeting a month, that we offer a public comment at the end of the meeting before Commissioner privilege. And it'd be nice for the people, like tonight, I can't stay because I've been gone running my senior mom around all day, have a public comment at the beginning and a public comment at the end. If you speak at the beginning, you can't speak at the end. But a lot of times, there's stuff that brews during these meetings, and there's stuff we want to say. And by one meeting a month, we're waiting 30 days to voice our opinion. So, that's my only thought. You guys have a great night. If I don't see you guys, have a Merry Christmas.
Seven.
Anyone else? All right, moving on.
Oh.
No, we got one. We got one. We got two.
Rudy Machaca, 315, Westminster. I watched this meeting on November 18th, and I too want to talk about meeting one time a month. You know, it was really surprising to me. This city manager sat here and admitted to all of you that she can't perform her job. She came right out and told you. I can't make the next meeting because this meeting is in her way. She made that admission. But this gets better. Not only does she make that admission, then she decided to change her schedule and said, "You know what? Because I can't do my job, you're the problem. I'm going to change your schedule." Now, this is the first time I've ever heard somebody gets hired in, a subordinate turns right around, tells the supervisor what they're going to do and not going to do. The city clerk chimes in on that and says, "Yeah, it's a lot of work." And the mayor, not to be outdone, says, "Oh, I know it because I go down there all the time, and they're really, really busy, and I'm there." Well, if you're down there all the time, Madam Mayor, is that micromanaging? I don't know.
Hello, thank you.
Not to be outdone, Commissioner Ross is quick to go into the charter and says, "Oh, we can go to one time a meeting." And nobody caught her, except I think Lisa Hendrick brought it up. Because here's the deal. I've sat behind her, and we've discussed that. I think it's better to continue the way you are because you can cancel a meeting, but you had a hard time putting this together when you tried to oust a sitting commissioner. It's better to go the other way. But here's what I think is going on. Because I did a little research, and where you came from, you have meetings once a month and low and behold, on Mondays. Now, when a subordinate comes in and does that, it suggests to me that this individual is trying to be an insulated, an isolated employee. No, here, we're bigger than where you came from. There's a little bit over 1,000 people here. We're a little over 4,000. And the two times a month, people need it here. City managers have come and gone. I've never heard that to be a problem. You come in less than weeks, months, and it's a big problem. But what gets me is you didn't come in here with a, any kind of impact study or research or anything, say, "Ladies and gentlemen, this is, this needs to be on, an item on the agenda, and let's work this out." No. You were that confident that when you came in, you already knew you had the votes, which suggests something else is going on, and you already had the schedule made out. Folks at home, pay attention carefully with what they do tonight, because they're either going to confirm what I'm saying or they'll refute it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Rosalie Squires, 211, Michigan. I've lived here 27 years. That's a pretty good chunk of time. 66, that's a lot of years of my life I've lived here. You know, in 27 years, we've never had a problem with two meetings. I just don't understand why all of a sudden it's a problem. Having been raised by a single mom that worked three days, three jobs to raise me, to hear the word, "Well, it's too much work. It's too much work." I don't know, none of the clerks we had, Helen Huzuka, Diana Cade, I can't remember, oh, Sharon somebody, I can't remember the other one's name. I never heard them complain about all this too much work. I do not understand why this, "Oh, well, you don't know why I'm so here." The mayor says, "I don't, you don't know why I'm here so, I'm here more than you think." Well, you know, that's not according to our charter, the way things are supposed to run. You're not supposed to be here all the time. And like Rudy says, it's micromanaging. We did have one particular city manager that complained about micromanaging a lot. I just don't understand this, why we want to take away, to go, take the two meetings away. Another thing I get really disgusted with is you seem to gavel the people, like me, you gavel if I whisper, but anybody else can say four or five words, and you don't gavel them, ever. I think that's really a shame. You know, I'm not going to dwell on this too much more because it's been kind of a hard month for me. I am going to say, I thought our Christmas parade was wonderful, and last night, the old newsboys voted to sponsor it every year. I think that's really a step in the, a positive direction because, you know, this is about the children. We work our feet off, making sure kids get a Christmas, asking, begging people for donations, trying to raise money so kids in Marine City and where the fire authority is have a Christmas. And I think to take it one step further and make sure kids have a parade, I think it's wonderful. I think that our parade, for having been put together last minute, the parade was really cool. And I think in that spirit, I'll just say, thanks, everyone, for participating in the parade, for coming out. And I really hope that we don't backtrack, that we keep our minutes and our meetings in place, because I think this is a way of going backward, not forward. And I also think that it takes away from the heart of the people and the community. People have come out of this meeting. If you look back on my record, there were years that I never missed a meeting. So, years, like maybe a whole decade or more. So, I think these meetings are important, and I think they should continue as is. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to approving of the meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of November 18th, 2021? Roll call, vote, please.
I didn't hear a motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. My feet are cold. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion in order to discuss. Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th.
Motion, we have a support? I'll support it. Any discussion?
Yes. On page four, regarding the alley, there was discussion regarding the differences in alleys, that there was a vacated alley, an alley which may be the responsibility of the city and an alley that is not. And I just, that information was in there. I can re-watch the video in order to see exactly what was said, but it was mentioned, and I just feel that that would be a helpful thing for the community to understand.
You said a vacated alley, alley that was maintained by the city, did you say?
And one which is maintained, which was apparently the case in that specific.
By the citizen.
By, right, by the homeowners. To which the alley abuts. And that was the specific instance of this. That's the only thing that I personally felt was missing. That was it. Otherwise, I thought they were great.
Anyone else? Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of November 18th, 2021? There is no discussion, but I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the closed session minutes of November 18th, 2021.
I support. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Consent agenda. We have some business licenses. We've got Styles by Scott, which is a barber shop on Bridge Street. We have the Autism Systems LLC. We've got the special event, which is Santa Claus is coming to town. That's the Santa Drive Around, where we drive Santa around all through the streets. That's on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, December 7th. It starts at 6:00 PM. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 7A, B, and C.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Financial business. We have expenditures, including payroll, $195,455.62. Can I have a motion to approve expenditures?
I make a motion to approve expenditures for $195,455.62.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All right, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have preliminary financial statements. I just need a motion to receive and file.
Make a motion to receive and file the financial statement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Up, up. Question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
These are just October. Are we going to get any of the other ones that we haven't done from all the other months?
I really can't speak to much of this. Maryland has been paying the bills, and UHY has just now started to get back into the rest of the reporting so that the financial statements are accurate. So, I'm, they're giving us the best they can right now, but UHY is in there right now working on it, so.
Eventually, though, we're going to get like July and August and September and all the ones we have not gotten.
I can ask them to go back that far once everything's reconciled, yes.
We need to approve them. If they've got up to October, the other one's got to be done if they've got October done. I just want to make sure we're going to get them.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And unfinished business. We have some board appointments. So, zoning board of appeals, we have two vacancies, one board member and one alternate. And do I make a motion on each one of these?
Yes.
Yes.
Are some of these returning people, just re-ups?
Yeah, I put on the applications behind there when it was a reappointment.
Yeah, some of them are.
They should be. It'd be nice if they were on the cover page, so.
Do you want me to go through the list and tell everybody right now who's, was, is reapplied for the board? Would that be helpful?
It'd be faster. Yes, please.
Under zoning board of appeals, James Turner is reapplying. Under Tifa board, both of those are new vacancies. We've had those open for quite some time, so those are new applicants. Under historical commission, Kim Turner and Genevieve Prang. I put these in the order of how they were received and the date received. Those two are reapplying. The other two are new applicants. Board of review, John Pollan is a brand-new applicant. And under dangerous building, all three are, have reapplied to run on that board.
Okay.
Okay.
For zoning board, I make a motion to appoint James Turner and John Pollan for the two vacancies. Or it's for the one board member, James Turner, and the alternate, John Pollan. So, I do those individually, right? All right, so we have a motion and support. I do a roll call vote for each one?
You can just do yays or nays on these.
But with her on the phone.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Wendy. Yes, roll call and everything.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. So, roll call, vote, please.
Yes, sorry about that.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Now, what are we doing, just the zoning?
I'm doing, yeah, I'm just going to do one at a time.
The primary and the alternate.
And you're doing both people?
James Turner for the board member, and then John Pollan for the alternate.
No.
You said no?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen. Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving down to Tifa board, these are mayor-appointed boards, so I'm making a motion to appoint Gabriel Costanzo and Kim Turner for the Tifa board, two vacancies.
Support.
Motion and support. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Going down to historical commission.
I'll make a motion to, to appoint Kim Turner, Brian Ross, and Andrew P.
How do you say your last name?
Say your last name.
Pac Ladenas.
Pac Ladenas.
I think P sounds good.
Yes.
Yeah, P's good.
For those three vacancies.
Support. We have a motion and support. Roll call, vote, please.
Okay, I just have a question regarding discussions. Do I, must I omit myself as I am a running, running for the office?
Oh, for voting?
Yeah. Or can I vote for myself?
No, unless you don't believe.
No, no, I believe.
You're going to do a good job.
Just not be the right guy for the. I wanted to make sure I was in the right.
I'll vote for him.
Okay. No seat. Discussion over. Sorry.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Border review, we have one board member and one alternate. So, I make a motion to put John Pollan in as the board member and Madeline McCarthy. No, she didn't want to be in, right?
She withdrew.
So, we have, that's right, we still need an alternate.
For an alternate, yes.
And this is something that meets three times a year. Just letting you know. Letting everybody know, three times a year. So, I make a motion then to appoint John Pollan, and we, like I said, we still have the alternate vacancy. So, I need a second.
I like support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Discussion just briefly. What happens then if we can't appoint an alternate?
We have to still look for that.
Yep.
We have to continue to hope someone applies.
Okay. So, it basically would reopen the application process, just making sure.
Just for the alternate.
I'll just bring it back to you when I get another application.
We'll keep seeking applications.
Yep.
Okay.
But preferably someone with some type of a real estate or knowledge of buildings,
experience would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And dangerous building board of appeals, we have three vacancies and three applicants. So, I make a motion to appoint Graham Allen, John Pollan, and James Turner for dangerous building board of appeals.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen. Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. It's good to see so many volunteers for these board vacancies. That's nice, get involved. Where am I? Hang on.
New meeting schedule.
So, now we are on, yeah, gee. So, we're going to discuss the new meeting schedule proposal. City Manager Holly, you want to talk about this?
Sure. So, just circling back around with this, after the last meeting, everybody kind of wanted a chance to check their schedules again and look at the option of doing one meeting a month. We discussed a lot of different things. This is about streamlining things a little bit. This is about better use of everybody's time, not wasting taxpayer dollars and, and staff dollars and, and time creating and doing two meetings a month if we don't need them. So, this is when you are organized and things are planned deliberately, one meeting a month is more than sufficient. The idea is if there's something important comes up, a big issue, the audit, the budget, whatever it may be, you do a special meeting that's primarily focused just on that item, and then that's the focal point anyway.[1695.91] you do a special meeting that's primarily focused just on that item and then that's the focal point anyway. It's not drawn out in another agenda. So this is just something we wanted to try. I, I am really, I don't like, I'll be completely honest, the Thursday meetings are very difficult. And I'll be honest, it's the Thursday, we go into the weekend. I, I don't like being, and I know the rest of the staff feel the same way, when you leave here, we're oftentimes given tasks to do. There's things that we wanna look into or handle. Well, it sits for three days before we come back on a Monday and address anybody's concern, whether it's the public's concern, whether it's a commissioner's concern, whatever it is. It makes sense to have our meetings at the beginning of the week where tasks can be accomplished at the conclusion of that meeting. So that is my reasoning for wanting to move it to the beginning of the week. And if you look at most communities, most communities do have them at the beginning of the week, not at the end. So that is the reasoning for moving it up. We did take into consideration Bill's difficulty with the Tuesday nights and we threw out that Monday night was an option as well. And that we could do it at the 7:00 PM on Monday nights and that seemed to work for everybody. And honestly, with the conversations that the public is going to go and look for our agendas anyway to know what's on the agenda, they will know that the time has been changed. We will publicize it everywhere that it needs to go. And most of our repeat customers or, you know, residents are at this meeting here. They, if this decision's made, that they know and they talk to others who are the repeat residents that attend the meetings. I don't think the advertisement of that would be an issue. We would just like to try to be more organized and have a more efficient one meeting a month at a beginning of the week.
It's worth a try. I mean, that's definitely worth a try. I mean, alls you can do is try, right?
Exactly.
If it works, it works. If it doesn't, then punt, right?
Exactly. And if we're finding we're, you know, scheduling these extra meetings a month every month, then we can reevaluate this. But this is an ask it, let's try it. We have to set the schedule for 2022 anyway and we haven't done it because we were holding out to see if this would be an option. So that schedule hasn't been made yet, so you can do it.
I've got a conflict on Mondays because my Lions meetings are on Mondays. I'm the vice president and it'd be kind of bad that I don't show up for my own meetings in there. So that's my only issue is Mondays are my Lions meetings. And could it be looked at that you work on Friday and take Monday off? That would give you the extra day. I don't think anybody out there would have any problem with that either.
What was that?
You change the day off from, you work on Friday and you take Monday off. You still got a three-day weekend.
I'll be honest with you, Commissioner, Mondays are busy. Monday is the, when people come off at the weekend.
How are you gonna do all this on top of it?
Well, this is already prepared the week prior. Your agenda's prepared the week prior, giving you guys all of the opportunity to review it through the weekend and you come in Monday. The rest of the week is to execute the tasks that come from the meeting. Monday, we're walking and we're, we're prepared from the last week.
But that's my problem too, that I gotta prepare on a weekend when most people are gone. At least, I know I'm finally retired, so I go do things. So now I gotta do that on a weekend instead of during the week when I normally do it. And then if we do have to have a special, if something comes up, now you're gonna have to try to get ahold of us during the weekend possibly to try to schedule a, a quick meeting, which is gonna be an issue if people are gone. So to me, I think we oughta still leave it on Thursday, but it's gonna be an issue for me because I've got another conflict with another meeting. I mean, it's, it's difficult that I gotta shift. Since I've been doing this so long, I've got all my meetings scheduled so that I can make them all. Because I do, I do Lions, I do old newsboys.
We all, we all have multiple things that we sit on.
It's fine, but I got fire authority, I've got pension, I've got the other ones, and try to do it. So all I'm saying is I've got them all scheduled so far so that I can make them all and now you're gonna throw me a wrench and now I gotta try to reevaluate that. But that meetings, I've been going to for over 10 years and it's on Monday at 6:30. That's the time they start.
Which Monday of the, is it every Monday?
Sometimes, yes, it's every single Monday.
We're only looking at the third Monday of the month.
Third Monday of the month.
That's one Monday.
But mine can be every Monday. You know, I mean, when we have projects going on, we're meeting every Monday. When we have wild game dinner and we're doing a fundraiser and we're doing whatever, we're meeting all the time because we have to get all our ducks in a row.
Well, and I mean, to that point, to that very point, we're taking one meeting off of your very busy calendar by doing it one time a month.
You're not taking one off.
Really? That's.
What about Wednesday?
Wednesday did not work for this group when we originally talked about this. I believe it was Bill had said that Wednesdays were really out, so. We had thrown out Monday and Tuesday.
Wednesday I have my conferences, so I'm.
Right.
There all day.
I mean, we talked about one Monday.
Pardon me?
Sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and the other one was the ZBA. That's not all the time, but that's on Monday in New Baltimore. And I have to be at the ZBA meetings. That's my conference.
Is that ZBA bill on the third Wednesday, the third Monday of?
Yeah. And then they're only scheduled.
Can you go back to the Tuesday?
They're only scheduled when they're scheduled.
If I remember, your Tuesday, last, last meeting we talked about was a pre-plan meeting. It wasn't your planning meeting, but it was a pre-plan meeting.
Pre-planning is at.
But Mr. Bryson says he couldn't go on Tuesday.
I think he said that Tuesdays were difficult. I don't know that he couldn't do them, that would, but I know they, they were, he'd have to plan.
Yeah, the pre-planning is, is, yeah, in the morning at nine o'clock. So this wouldn't interfere with our stuff there. Just a lot of running back and forth.
Speaking for myself, if we're able to, you know, espouse our difficulties, definitely earlier in the week would be better for me. You know, the weekend is typically when I end up working on the stuff anyway. I work very full schedule throughout the week, Monday through Friday, sometimes a little bit on the weekends. So, yeah, anything, especially towards the end of the week gets very difficult. Thursday, honestly, is my absolute worst day.
Wendy's gonna call my phone. She's gonna call my phone, your phone's breaking up.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, he said he couldn't do Tuesday.
I'm not entirely sure, but I do remember that there was one day that he was out, so.
It was Tuesday.
Yeah, he did mention.
Is that better?
Yeah, I can't remember if he couldn't or if it was hard. She called Cheryl's phone.
So if we're only doing one meeting a month, even on a Thursday, it shouldn't be that difficult if we're only doing one compared to two.
Do you want to look at this all next week again and come up with something different and?
I mean, truth.
We have to approve this.
We have to approve the schedule for 22.
Your charter requires that you approve your next year's meeting schedule, sort of like now. We're a little late.
Yeah. So our next meeting on the 16th, I think it is, we would be presenting you with 2022's.
Schedule.
Schedule. And you'd have to approve it.
I'm just not understanding, Lisa, that we talked about Mondays and you never said anything about the Lions.
Well.
I'm just asking that on the one, I'm asking, on the one Monday a month, right?
The third Monday.
Third Monday a month, you let them know, like everybody else is gonna let our groups know, that that's the city commission meeting. I mean, we all have things to do.
That's fine, but I don't, I don't wanna miss my meetings. I mean, I've had this all planned out for all these years and now I gotta be inconvenienced because somebody else wants to change it. And that goes for the whole town. I mean, everybody's used to the first and third Thursday of the month. Everybody knows when the meetings are. Again, why don't you just change work Fridays, take Monday off? And then you got that extra day that you need to get everything done. I don't think that that's a big, a difficult thing.
We can't close the office on a Monday.
Now, the two people come in and pay bills and, no.
Well, they wanna do it on Friday too, but we close.
Now you're inconveniencing the public.
I hear from people in the public that they want Fridays open.
This isn't for public comment.
Well, I'm saying if, if we're down one on a Thursday, why don't we just try the one Thursday a month and see how bad it is? I don't think it's gonna be as bad if you're doing one meeting a month on Thursday.
Give it a try.
I'm willing to try if you wanna do one meeting a month on a Thursday.
Right.
So what would it be, the first one or the third one?
What do you think?
Whatever one.
I think probably still stick with the third because the first week, doesn't that interfere? It's just, elections are always the first week.
First week is awkward.
Yeah, first week is usually awkward. There's things, so stick with the third. Stick with the third week and we'll do the Thursday.
All right, I make a motion then to.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to bring this, you do want to approve the schedule tonight?
I thought that's what we were doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Well, if they don't, they have to approve this and the 2022 on the 16th at the same time.
Right. So go ahead. Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I wanna make sure we're, you know.
Got it. So I make a motion to change the, excuse me, the city commission meeting minute schedule for the third Thursday of every month, holding the meetings once a month unless special meetings are required.
Do we have to mention the planning commission, the planning?
We have a motion and support.
Do you need the planning commission change in there also?
Oh, yes, thank you. We were just moving that up to 6:00 PM.
You gonna add that to your motion?
Do I have to for planning?
Well, we changed the time.
We changed the time.
That's what I was getting. It sounds like we're doing them, let's do it, yes. I amend your motion.
So I'm also adding then that we change the planning commission meeting to 6:00 PM on that date.
And Wendy seconded, is that okay?
Wendy seconded, yeah. All right, so we have a motion, we have a motion and a support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to the RFPs for 300 Broadway and 303 South Water Street. City manager Holly, you want to talk about this?
Sure thing. So I was asked to send out an RFP for both of the properties. And I sent it out to 12 different commercial real estate companies around St. Clair, Macomb, and Oakland counties. We ended up receiving, I think it's four in there. And then Bachelors, we threw back in the mix because he had originally put in a proposal. And not both of them though, did he? He just did one of the properties.
He just did the one property, yes.
He had just done 303. So what we had said would happen at this point is that we would put a work group in place to start kind of going through these RFPs, get an understanding for what the assets of the city are, how much things are worth, and start debating the next steps on what the city does wanna do with them. If they wanna keep the properties, if they wanna sell the properties, if they wanna do whatever with the properties. But we wanted to create a more neutral, fair territory for this type of discussion and I thought a work group would meet that criteria because in a work group, decisions can't be made. There's no threat of a vote. It's just, just that. It's a debating, neutral platform. So what I'd like to ask is that these are kicked over to a work group and those work groups, we start scheduling and we begin meeting, probably right after the first of the year.
And those are all open, public meetings?
Yes. So work groups are, they're held to the same standards as an open, as the Open Meetings Act. They are publicized, they, there are minutes, they're, the only difference is, is there's no action that can be taken at the meeting, but they are public meetings.
And there is a public commentary.
Yep.
So I hate to ask, where's that gonna be on the schedule?
Work groups, we will, we will determine work groups separately.
The third Thursday of every year.
But what, but I, my suggestion, and I do have a thought on that, is we do it on the front end of our meetings. So the work group stay starts, depending, maybe the first one is an hour and we gauge how long it kinda takes, how. You know, people kinda lose interest in things after maybe an hour or something. If we need to tack on a half hour, start it at 5:30. But I think we could tack it on to the front end of the commission meetings, which would be maybe convenient for the public as well.
I don't know if that gives people enough time because I know this is gonna be a very, very big topic here. I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion, there's a lot of issues that have to be brought up, looked at, resolved. And I don't know if an hour's gonna do it or else we're gonna have to have a lot of them.
Well, I think we do have, most definitely, there needs to be more than one. This is gonna be an ongoing thing. We have as many work group meetings as we need to have before you are all comfortable with whatever decision you wanna make.
Yeah, I think that when we do the work group, we need to get some people from some of our boards on. And I've thought about this and I think that we should do one person from planning, three commission members, one person from the CEBD board because that's community development.
Yep.
Right? And so what I'd like to do is I talked to Ben Heath from planning and he's willing to be on the board. Joe Moran, he's been around for a long time on the CEBD, BE, CED. The Community Economic Development Board, that one, he's willing to be on. And I'd like to, Brian, if you're interested, because you're on historical, he's got some historical background. Jake Bryson is a businessperson with experience. And, I mean, I wouldn't mind being on it, but I don't have to be on it.
How many people are we putting on this board?
That's it.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I didn't know that.
Three commissioners, one planning, one, so five, five people and then, like I said, this is just a work group. You know, it doesn't have to be, it really shouldn't be a ton of people because you really wanna get things decided and done, so.
Well, they're not gonna decide anything technically.
What I'm just saying, amongst themselves, right, they aren't, there's not gonna be any decisions being made, but they have to, you know, they have to present things in some logical form, so.
And a conduit back to the other boards. So that's why I think it makes sense to have three commissioners. So one of the arguments that I had heard when I had first started back in September was there was a feeling of some people knew that things may be in discussion and other people didn't know, didn't know where things were with us. So by having three commissioners to come back and relay this information, I mean, you're all welcome to come to the work group as well. I mean, it's a public forum.
Yep.
But you have three people to come back and be a conduit back to this board on what's happening. Same with the CED board and same with the planning board. You have somebody to go back to these boards and relay this information, which is exactly what you want to be happening with your other boards and everybody communicating, talking, know what's going on.
Okay. So question for you. We have to be careful of that because if all of us come.
We have to be careful of the quorum issue.
Correct. So how do we get around that? I mean.
I mean, you're, you're allowed to be a, you know, it's going to be a published, posted meeting under the Open Meeting.
Yes.
So we're not, we're not violating the Open Meetings Act in any way, but I think you're allowed to come as public members.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure because at one time you told us before we could go, but then we couldn't talk and we couldn't do this and that.
That was that, I think, I do remember that circumstance.
Yes.
But this, this'll be a non-decision-making, open meeting.
Okay.
You know, the only, the only suggestion I would, I would make on this is that I would, I might allow the citizens to talk longer than five minutes.
Yes.
Because one of the things we talked about a long time ago was gathering the input of the community and, you know, I'd hate to be, seeing you gavel people, okay, your idea's done. And then I think ultimately, did we, did we ever talk about we were gonna have maybe a town meeting on this at some point after this, after this work sessions, maybe then gather, have one big meeting where everyone.
Like a town hall?
Like a town hall meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, because it's really important. I mean, this.
Yeah, these are hot topics and they're, and they are very important. They're important for two reasons. These are your assets.
Yep.
And the fate of the assets.
Yep.
I think is, is very important.
And there's a lot of issues within a couple of these assets that's gotta be worked out even if you, whether you keep them or not.
So if you, if you form this group, which sounds like you're gonna do, then the first meeting, when the group meets, they should appoint the chairperson who's gonna chair the meeting. We should have a designated person who's chairing the meeting. And then it would be my suggestion that you relax the limits on public comment time. Because this is one of those sessions where you really wanna hear from the public.
Yes, agreed.
When you brought this up, you were talking to all people on the committee and I thought you said somebody with real estate experience. And I didn't hear anybody that has real estate experience, the ones you named.
No, for real estate experience, that was the, one of the board, one of the boards.
Yeah.
That was the, one of the boards that we appointed.
Well, this could be a good idea to have somebody with real estate experience too.
And I can't do it because my license is with the VAS.
Do we need to make a motion on this right now or is this just?
I, I would make a motion to set up the subcommittee. In the motion, the motion should say it's a non-permanent committee because you're not, you, you don't.
It's a work group.
It's a work group committee.
Oh, okay.
But you, you don't have permanent work groups or committees in this, in this community. And, and designate the people and then go from there.
Are they keeping the infrastructure committee? That's, that's in place now, Moran and?
I think that one's still, yes.
Yeah, right before Elaine left, she kind of reestablished who was still on there and asked if you still wanted to remain on there. So we still have that group together.
I just, I haven't heard a meeting, that's what I was.
Anybody else have a comment?
So who's going to be on the board?
So I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, that we appoint for the, um, work group to start. Uh, person from planning, which is Ben Heath. Um, one person from the CEBD Board, which is Joe Moran. Couple commissioners, which is Jake Bryson, uh, Brian Ross, and John, are you interested?
Yes.
I'm just trying to spread the love a little bit.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, I have opinions.
Okay, that's it. It sounds like, it sounds like a good board or a good work group start. It's a start. Okay, so that's my motion.
Support.
We have a motion and support, roll call, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're going to, uh, go down to, uh, two, 2021 Water Main and Road Improvement Project. Uh, contractors' application for payment number two and change order number one. Uh, Mike is not here, so.
So I'm going to wing this a little bit on his behalf, he wasn't feeling good tonight. Um, so this was built into the contingency budget, so the money was allocated for it, but it did go over into that contingency fund by the 27, um, 1,286. So he just wants approval on that. And these are all, I mean, as, as he put it in here, I mean, these are all basic things that happened during the construction, um, nothing out of the norm, just legitimate issues that came across with the infrastructure upgrade.
Except for number four where the, the water line wasn't where it was supposed to be, which caused all this. I'm kind of concerned about that because I thought we documented all our water and sewer lines. We had done a whole study and documented all that, so I'm kind of wondering how that got, it wasn't in the right place, which required most of this, um, most of these fixes because of that.
I, I don't know why the line wasn't there, but I was made aware when it wasn't where they thought it was. Um, but it still needed to be replaced.
Anyone else?
I mean, short of a complete rescanning of all the water lines, I guess what will we do?
Well, they did that at one time, so that's why I was confused at why this one was not marked properly. They did all that due to one of the surveys when we did the grant.
I can ask Mike about it, maybe they didn't do every street, I don't know, but I, I can ask Mike about that survey and if there's cause for concern about this in the future or what, that's no problem.
I mean, it doesn't detail the amount of difference in the line or, you know, was it completely run down a different street, you know? It's difficult to know without hearing from Mike.
Yeah. I know he said some were even just jogs in the middle of the road that made no sense, where they would be going down and it needed to go left, but it would jog right and then come back and go straight. He said literally made no sense why it was done that way. So, I, I said the original people that put it in were just playing prank on you, I guess. I don't know.
Part of the charm of an old city.
Yeah, yeah.
An old city. So $358,363.87?
No, the 27,286.73, that's the amount.
Yeah, just the change.
Oh.
I was looking at that, I was like, what?
Yeah. You had already approved the original amount, this was just for the overage, but they had built the overage into the contingent, I can't talk, the contingency in the first place, so.
So $27,286.73.
Yes, please.
Okay, I need a motion.
So are we saying, I have a question. So are we saying that there was a $62,700 contingency available that we only used 27,000 of?
That is correct.
That's a better way to say it, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a way better way to say it.
Thank you very much. All right, I make a motion to approve the, uh, the change order for the amount of 27,286.73 to project control engineering.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion and support, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioners, Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And refrigerated sampler for the wastewater treatment plant, we have a price increase. Holly, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so this was something that had been, um, handled by DPW and the quote had been turned into the treasurer's office unfortunately. Um, the PO was never created for this to be ordered. And when we found out that it hadn't been done and we went back to do the PO, um, the price had increased. So it is an increase of $771 and so we, you need to reapprove this so that we can get this ordered. And this is, um, something that was, we were tagged by Eagle, um, as a violation for not having. So it's very important.
Yeah, recall approving this previously.
Yeah, this is mandatory.
Right. I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the slight price increase of the refrigerated sampler and associated equipment with the price changing from $6,837 to 6,000, 7,000, apologies, 6,000, $7,608 and zero cents.
Support.
We have a motion and support, um-
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Uh, do I need to first make a motion to waive competitive bidding or had we already done it?
You had already approved this, so.
We had already done that, approved this.
Just checking.
Yeah, good thought.
Thank you for asking that.
It's in the sheet at the end.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, yep. The, the meeting minutes from the previous meeting.
Shows we waived it right there.
Yep. Again, just making sure we didn't need to do it.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And new business, so we're going to talk about the Bridge to Bay Trail. Sir, you want to? Is this someone from the county that's going to speak to us?
Uh, I'm Mark Mano, I'm the chairman of the Marine City Advisory Committee of the Regional Trails Council, which represents the Bridge to Bay Trail. And as you know, the trail, the Bridge to Bay Trail has been in place for over 20 years, but, uh, and Marine City section was one of the first components of it. But now that there's, um, some available grant money, we'd like, uh, one of the, um, recommendations was to put in some, uh, fill in some gaps in the trail. So one of the gaps would be to put a downtown loop in through Marine City. And you've all got maps showing how that's, was configured. And, uh, the, uh, Community Foundation has made available, uh, money for an engineering grant, which I think your PCE is applied for. So if you have any, uh, if you, if you have any questions or, uh, concerns, I'm here to address that.
So Mark, my question would be the, the, um, trail location you have on the map here in the light green, is that, is that the only thing you're going to ask the engineering to look at or that's?
Well, they have to look at alternatives.
And if we, if we present any?
If you present alternatives, they will look at those.
Okay.
I know that Lisa at one time had an alternative.
Well, this one end of town here, where you're coming in off of Chartier, I think I'd take it to South Bell River and Bell River up and not try to, the way you've got this, you're going to go up to Robertson instead of Brown, which is the one that comes right out at the bridge and then that loops around, kind of goofy there. So you'd be better off to just come down Chartier straight to Bell River and break Bell River up to Bridge Street and around. That's the smoothest route and this backtrack thing here was really going to mess people up, this.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Going to Robertson Street because it doesn't go through there. So people would get really confused with that.
Plus, it's like a, it's like a scenic route right there and there's going to be, there's going to be a store, like a little-
Yeah, there's, there's some concern that, concern that Broadway should not be a main route, that, that it should be, uh, taken one block north to Pearl Street.
Oh, no, we're talking the south.
Oh, the south.
The south side.
Oh, down, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, down Water Street, that's up in the air. I mean, we'll have to see what the engineering says.
No, the, from the bridge down to Chartier, that area.
Yeah. Uh, we have a consultant, the Greenway Allianz that was looking into that.
Yeah.
And they're going to deal with, uh, with that. The, the point there is that there's a kayak launch there that's going to be a rest stop for the trail. At the, at the sou, at the south end of that bridge.
Yeah.
And then, and then going farther south on Bell, South Bell River Road, it has to meet up with Chartier and I, and, uh, the green, if you, if you see on your map the green spot, they want to, they want to avoid South Bell River and go down South Third Street.
Well, even if you did that, then come up Brown Street, don't do the Robertson, because you, you can still get to the kayak ramp, you're still going to see it. They're coming in there, but this backtrack thing is going to confuse people.
Can I ask, can I ask why they're, why they recommended avoiding South Bell River? I mean, I, I ride my bike and there's a sidewalk and-
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's a 25 mile an hour street, it's, it's-
I don't see any problem with it.
I don't either. I mean, I ride that route now, it's, it's a nice route.
Yeah.
Versus that other route.
And it's, and it's kind, it's easy, it's very well lit. You go down Third Street and I've ridden down Third Street.
It's rough.
A lot of parked cars and-
That's true.
Yeah.
I can pipe in for a second here too. So part of, um, what Mark has talked about is, yes, there is a commitment from PCE and grant money was received by Marine City through the Community Foundation in the amount of $10,000. The point of bringing this back to fruition tonight and getting it back on everybody's, the forefront is because a more long-term commitment needs to be made. There's a domino effect here, which I don't know if it was originally laid out this way or not, but it's the hooks that are in it now. If the city of Marine City accepts the $10,000 to have PCE do the engineering, you are now committing to the $17,000 commitment to continue this with Marine City's commitment to this. So the Community Foundation only wants to move forward with this piece of it if you're going to move forward with the back piece of it. So, the point of bringing this up tonight is, as a commission, you need to decide how far you do want to go financially with this commitment because you can't accept this $10,000 and start the engineering unless you're going to go all the way. So it's a bigger thing than just this piece.
True, but we got to get the route.
Well, without engineering, without engineering, we don't even know if-
Right.
Is apt to them.
So PCE will fix all of that and take all of those pieces into consideration, plus the wayfinding and the signage and all of that is going to be all part of it. But we don't sign that contract with them until you make the commitment if you do or don't want to go the entire distance with them.
Well, yeah, and there's a lot of these pictures I want to discuss because I, I don't know if this cuts out, uh, parking on these streets or what it does to the parking because they're putting in-
That, that's from the master plan of the, uh, that our consultant put together and it's, it's not, uh, cut in stone or anything.
Right. I, that's, they said specifically to the signage, um, there, there's a lot, a lot of signage, um, and there is some wiggle room with regard to the signage, but they did with the master plan, they did a great deal of studies with professionals who do these trails all over.
Right.
With the size, the distance between signs, the color and everything as to why they have the proposal they have in front of you. But as Mark said, that part's not set in stone, there's wiggle room, but that's once PCE becomes the commitment to, to do this in the engineering design.
And signage, I know we went through this once before when we did the Bridge to Bay Trail. The only, the only thing I'm going to caution on is that, again, we had a gentleman over on, um, at Butler and, uh, West Boulevard there that he was like on a corner, he's on the corner where the, the trail comes out and then it jogs over across on West Boulevard. Well, they put like 12 signs in his yard, you know, and the poor guy had to cut around it and he came to us and they, they skinny down on the amount of signs, so that's one only thing to be careful with, that you don't put so many signs in somebody's yard trying to do this. I mean, that guy had 12, 12 posts for all the different signs, one going south, one going north, one going uptown.
You might, you might see these signs for Route 20.
Yeah.
Going through Marine City. Route 20 doesn't even exist anymore, they could take those signs down because it, it included the ferry, the Marine City ferry that, that's not there.
Well, that route actually extends all the way to the west coast.
Yeah.
And, and you can get here and, I don't know.
So if we approve this, what, what does this do, what's the next phase? I guess that's my question.
Well, we, we won't know until the engineering, uh, study is done.
Okay.
But we want signage and we want to paint the pavement for bike paths if we're necessary.
So that, that means what you've got in this one sheet where you're showing, which is it here, this one?
So the, if, if you approve-
These sheets?
Yes.
So you'd want to do this on some of these streets?
Yes.
And, and that's going to have to be looked at by the community because that's going to cut into people's parking.
Correct. And I'm-
Then they would not be able to park on those streets.
It depends on, on each one.
Like, like this one here, South Bell River at Ward, you've got, it looks like a bike lane on both sides, which means then there'd be no parking whatsoever, even though on a lot of our streets we have parking on one side.
Right.
And that's going to be an issue because parking is really-
It's going to be an issue, but I think project control engineering is going to have to look into that.
Yeah. Because I don't, we don't want the whole town coming back on us because they can't park their car anymore in the street just because of a bike lane.
See, right now, the, the, the Marine City portion ends at Chartier and King Road and Chartier doesn't have a bike lane. So it's really, needs to be, uh, taken care of also.
So for tonight, you don't have to make a decision tonight. What we'd like to do is go into the, the new year with a path. So my ask tonight is to take these documents home, think on it, refresh your brains on it a little bit, and then maybe on the 16th at that meeting, um, we can provide you with the documents again, but what the commitment you would have to vote on is whether or not you want to go forward with the $10,000 grant from the Community Foundation that will lock you into going forward. And the preliminary estimate that I have right now, um, from the county, um, would be approximately $17,442.
Additional.
Additional. Yes. So, I want to make sure that I get all the rest of the information and the dollars, um, honed in a little bit more if I can from the county for you, but I just wanted to get this fresh in everybody's brain again because I know it's been a while since it's been discussed. But we want a commitment going forward of yes or no.
We first came to the commission in, uh, August of '20.
Been a while. Could you also put together some type of sheet showing all the figures and the facts that go along with this, the 10,000, the 17,000? Can you put something together with all that and then?
Yep.
And I think this ought to go out, I don't know, these maps here, I would like people to see them to see what their thought is on it because-
A lot of this stuff is available on the Bridge to Bay Trail website.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have a link?
Yeah, Bridge to Bay Trail.
Is it on our site though?
Oh, I don't think so.
We can make sure it's on there, so people can see it. But yes, all of this is on that site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
For if a company does these again, showing existing and proposed would be very, very helpful.
Yeah.
You know, for these?
Yeah.
Like, you know, just to show the end item, well, what's there, you know?
Yeah.
Are you taking away parking, what's happening?
Correct, because some of the streets, there's no parking on one side, so if you use that, that wouldn't be an issue, but if you're doing it, there's a couple of streets where it goes on both sides, and that's going to be an issue.
Okay. Commissioner, or I'm sorry, city manager report.
All right, I have some really happy news for once. The DNR Trust Fund Board met yesterday and Marine City will be receiving the grant money for the Marina.
Yay.
Yay. So we have to wait for the legislature to actually appropriate the money. It's now more of a waiting game rather than a wondering game, but yes, that project is going to be happening and moving forward, so it's an exciting step for the city. And then honestly, other than that, things are pretty standard. We're plugging away at the office, working on some year-end stuff. UHY is on site, that's going great. Mary Ellen's trying to wrap up some stuff to go on, be back to being a grandma, which is wonderful. And I mean, really, we are just plugging away at year-end stuff. You may notice, I'm sad to say this out loud, but you may have noticed that the clerk's position has been posted, as our clerk has announced her retirement next year, so that position has been posted.
September of next year, correct?
I wish. So we are going.
December 31st.
We're going to attempt to get somebody in here as, as long as they're, you know, a capable and qualified person as soon as possible to have time to train under her and learn, especially knowing that there are elections next year. So we're going to want a competent person to do that, so. But everything's going well and I'd just like to say that I think that the, we're working on a little bit more positivity around the offices, trying to keep things a little bit more upbeat going into the holiday season. I know it's difficult on the heels of Tuesday, but we're trying to turn things around and change the momentum and perception of things, because I know things have been pretty down lately for a lot of people. And going into the holiday season and the new year, I think it's important for us to start portraying a little bit more positivity in the public as well as on staff. I think it's important not only for business owners and residents, but in staff and people who Google Marine City and may want to come and start a business here, or public perception in general. So I, today I kind of want to make a plea to everybody as well as, you know, kind of my year-end remarks a little bit, that let's try to change the narrative a little bit and be a little bit more positive and optimistic instead of tearing each other down and see what we can do from there. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Privilege and Liaison reports, let me start with. We're going to go backwards, so let's do Brian Russ.
Okay, number one, I have to tip my hat to the Marine City Mariners football team. Win or lose, they did a great job and they poured their hearts and souls into the game. It was, made me proud to be a Mariner and, you know, I really enjoyed being there and supporting them despite the outcome of the game. But they, I think you can see on social media, everybody's given them all sorts of support and there's much love there. Thanks to Andrea Schink for running the Santa Parade, it was really fun. Sorry that everybody had to hear my color commentary of it, but hopefully you enjoyed it and I didn't screw anything up too bad. So thanks to the mayor, Chief Heslop, Joe Slankster of the Fire Department, the Lions Club, HPA team, and all the others who helped participate in it, it was really, really neat, the Marine City Band Football Team, Paul Dingeman and cameraman Kenny. Next is Ryan Wiley, who a while ago was on our agenda for doing the Eagle Scout Project at the beach. You can see that now, it's there for you to look at and it's just next to the old bathroom facility. So he's not quite done, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, an item from our past has come to fruition and that he's done a great job on that and deserves to be commended. I got my COVID booster the other day and again urge everybody to do that and get vaccinated if you can. And finally, and probably most importantly, my thoughts go out to Oxford and all the victims of that terrible, terrible thing. I'm hopeful that it, that people can come together and make changes that will make profound and good changes for things like this not to happen again. Come together, don't stick to your typical talking points and just brush it under the rug again. That's all, thanks, and everybody have a wonderful Christmas.
Commissioner Kreidler?
I'd like to just thank everybody for all their hard work over the year and thanks for covering for me when I was out traveling the world, or at least our small country. And I'd like to just support all of the different infrastructure ideas that we have for our trails and recreational activities. This city is a gem. It's kind of our top secret little gem here right now, which is good for a lot of reasons, but it also would be good to have some tourism money come in and make its way to our businesses and help all of our residents and have a good, have this place be that little gem that we can be proud of as well. So I, again, with Commissioner Ross, I believe that we, as a community, need to try to find ways to prevent the kind of tragedies that we see in Oxford. And I don't know that it's, you know, it's, it's our people, we need to, we need to be better at being good citizens and good neighbors and teaching all of our people to respect one another and care for one another. Because with that, it doesn't matter what, what the opportunities that present themselves for chaos, people just won't do it, because people care about one another and believe they're worth valuing. So let's hope for the best.
Good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Claussen?
I want to thank Andrea Schink for taking on the parade. And she was on the Recreation Committee in one of my other units for years, so she has an idea of what she was doing. Santa Claus was extremely happy with the float that he was on. And because it is, it is a made sled that works, it's not just a, and then we had a quiet generator so he could hear people. And he commented that he couldn't hear anything in St. Clair the weekend before because the generator was so loud and, and so he wants to come back, he was happy. So the kids all lined up to see Santa Claus and I think our last person, last kid sat on Santa Claus at 9:30. So, and I, I drive that one every year and with Santa Claus and I've never seen that many kids out. It's just, they were, they were just flooding off the sidewalk into the street, just huge amount of people. Had a lot to watch, don't wish you don't run over any kids. And I just want to thank everybody that was in the parade and we had a good time. Thank you.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes, I don't know if you can all hear me or not, but I do want to say that I had every intention of being at the meeting tonight. I'm out here visiting my sister in California, but COVID had different plans. I do not have it, but she does, and so I didn't feel like I should come back. As a matter of fact, I can't. So that's why I'm not there tonight, but I will be there. And I do want to thank everyone for making sure that I had a decent connection tonight. I also want to thank the Mariner Football Team. Believe it or not, I was out here and I stumbled on the game. I was looking for it, it wouldn't let me stream it on my Xfinity because I wasn't on my home wifi, but I actually stumbled on it on, on cable here. So I watched the whole game, so thanks guys for being a part of that and for, you know what, just doing this for our community, so thank you. And I also got to watch the parade because people were, I had different people holding up their phones for me to watch that, because I was out here then, so that was nice, it was great to see that, so just some happiness in our town. And, you know, I do want to go on with what Commissioner Ross and Kreidler both said about Oxford, you know? It always hits hard, but it hit really hard because I was the central office, I was an administrator teacher for years in Oakland County Schools and a lot of those teachers and administrators are, they're friends of mine and they're, they're very hard by that. You know, we've got to take better care of each other, we've got to be more aware of what's going on in our families and in our households. So, you know, just hug and love one another, that's all I can say, and my heart goes out to the families and to the friends and to every, all the stakeholders in Oxford. So that's it, and everyone, take care.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I just want to say too that I know this whole town is proud of all the football team. Good going, Jim, I know your son is a great player, and he's going to be back. Yep, so they couldn't have done a better job. I mean, you know, there's nothing better than watch those kids play, so they, they played their hearts out and they did a good job and I know the whole city is proud of them. Andrea did a great job with the parade. She had some hiccups there at the end, but she did a great job putting it together and she also joined the Old News Boys, thank you Andrea. We have the Maritime Christmas coming up this weekend, so with that, there's a Lions Craft Show on Saturday at Ward Street and also the Old News Boys, which I'm also in. We're doing the paper sales Friday, Saturday, 11 to 5 on Friday and 8 to 5 on Saturday. So watch out for us in the street, we're going to be out there, we're going to be hawking our papers, we got the paperback this year. So it's for the kids, so if you can give us a little bit, we'll give you a paper and just don't run us down. And one thing I wanted to bring up on the alley issue, somebody gave me a phone call because there was an issue before, because of that utility, you'd have to get approval from the utility companies first and utilities demand that all the homeowners, it would have to be unanimous support from all homeowners, so it wouldn't have been so simple, it's just getting rid of it.
Yeah, we would, we would have had to notify the utilities of the public hearing if it went that far.
Yeah, yeah. And that's it?
I just want to say that we have a second opportunity, obviously we did the parade and that was great, but there's also another opportunity. We decided to continue driving Santa around like we did last year. Last year, we didn't have a parade because of, you know, everything that was going on. So we took Santa street by street, tried to hit every single street, we missed a few, I'm sure, but it was really successful. We had so many people, I mean, old, young, you name it, standing at their windows waving. So many kids brought their letters to Santa, so we're going to do it again this year. So it's just another opportunity to see Santa, and it is again this Tuesday, December 7th, we're going to start at 6:00 PM. We are still finalizing like the, the map and how we're going to drive around, but Santa's going to be with a police escort, DPW escort, the truck is going to be all decorated, he's going to be on a speaker so he can talk to the kids, there's going to be Christmas music playing, so you'll hear us go by. And if for some reason you miss us, then you can always come to, you know, different streets, we're going to try to do some Facebook communicating and show where we're at. So get the, get the kids to get their Christmas letters ready if they haven't had an opportunity already to, to see Santa. And just a reminder again that Maritime Christmas is a citywide Christmas event, it is this Saturday, the 5th, from 10 to 5. There's stuff happening all throughout the city, all the stores have got deals, the restaurants have got some, you know, deals with food and cocktails, so please come down and support your business community this, this time. And that is it. The city commission will now enter into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, MCL 15-268 H Henry. There may or may not be any action taken upon returning to open session, and I need a motion to enter into closed session.
Make a motion to enter into closed session?
Support.
Motion in support, roll call please.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we're entering into closed session at 8:25 PM.